This is for.
Thank you, and welcome to the Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners Caucus Meeting, July 7, 2022. George, can you do roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Bahco.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker, Lisa Catania, Michael Pierce, myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. We will open up citizens' comments who are not able to attend the meeting in person by dialing 571-748-4021. That number again is 571-748-4021, and enter in 1-811-879-31-POUND. 1-811-1-879-31-POUND. Here's your code to unmute, dial star six, enter a mutant, state your name, your address, and telephone number if you want us to get back to you, and we'll be given two minutes to speak. Lines will be open for a few minutes. Take note, there was no call-ins tonight. Open it up to the floor here tonight. And so any citizens' comments out there, to my right, to the left. Make note, no citizens' comment here tonight. Open up with our professionals' report, engineers' report. Lisa Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. You do have a copy of my report. A few things that I'd like to go over this evening. As you know, the 2022 road program has been along. We had a little bit of a hiccup today because of rain, so we are moving forward. Residents will note that there is a schedule on the website. It's been posted because of the rain today, delayed a day. So the schedule is actually a day behind at this point. The Chichester Avenue Streets Gate Phase Two, we did get word from PennDOT that all of their comments for review comments for the plan are okay. They have one last item that we need, and that is the sign-off from any of the affected property owners. Typically, PennDOT requires not only the signature and a notary of each one of those. They will accept just the signature, and the township, if the township would write a letter saying that that is acceptable to the township. So we're going to move forward that way. I believe we have three letters that were three approvals from homeowners that are still necessary. The stormwater projects, I've got the Peach Plum Cherry Street. Believe we have one more easement that we need. Thank you to Commissioner Neary for pushing that along. We have an out-of-town property owner that we're trying to get the easement from. So that is moving forward and hoping that we'll be able to get that started prior to the fall season. The other stormwater projects, I have a request to take a look at the end of Second Street for drainage issues. I just wanted to mention that because we don't, we have that on a list. I don't have any authorization to do any of that work. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware that we're going to be looking at that as well as Quillen Lane, Putt and I are going out on Wednesday to take a look at that project. The Tara Circle Basin Project is out for bid. That bid is due on July the 28th. So we'll have that for the August meeting. Have prepared the stormwater ordinance, which is compliant with the MPDES MS4 permit that the township currently has. There are a few changes to that. It's very slight with Upper Chichester Township's ordinance. It's based on the current ordinance, the impervious coverages that would trigger are still the same. So many of the municipalities had 1,000 or 2,000. We've been at 500. So we've been in compliance with that portion. I've added to the ordinance, which was an option of pet waste. So if we have problem areas where people aren't cleaning up their pet waste, there's another tool for us because that fecal matter that's getting into the stormwater, getting into the creek is actually a violation of the MPDES permit. So we've added that, and I took the option of requiring the property owner where there is a stormwater facility to do an annual inspection versus the township getting into doing those inspections and sending the reports. They'll be required to do the inspection and send the report to the township. If there's action that needs to be taken, the township would then send a letter explaining to them that they need to come into compliance. So it's really what we're doing now.
I have a storm sewer drain in my backyard. Do you want me as the resident?
Not a stormwater basin.
Right.
A rain garden.
Oh, okay.
They're not hit lots.
All right.
Still required, if it is a township-owned sewer system, the township is still required to do those inspections. This is merely for many of the new stormwater facilities that have been placed, and the old ones for that. We just did that over Chelsea Parkway, for example, and asked them to take a look at that, which I have received that report.
Couldn't you put that, I understand what Joe's saying. If it's in his backyard, he's going to know more and faster than we will if they're on a timetable for the inspections throughout the township. Would it hurt to have it in the ordinance just to do it and to notify us in case? I mean, we have our annual inspection, but at the same time, we can't mandatory them to. It's basically just your ordinance would mandatory the resident to keep an eye on the rain garden, the basin, and anything else, but not a storm drain. That's. I'm trying to get a little help from them, but not for them to clean it.
You currently.
Still.
Sign would say that if anyone contacts the township, if there is an issue, there's a way to advise public works that there's an issue with any of the storm sewers within their area. Usually, it's in somebody's backyard, right in front of their house. They're seeing a hole somewhere. So we've been picking it up that way. I don't know if you want to mandate that in an ordinance.
Okay.
The mere reason, if you're putting that responsibility on the homeowner, if there is an issue and there seems to be some argument as to who's responsible.
Oh, absolutely, right. Now, yeah, I just brought it up. I suppose we're here tonight discussing.
Right. Yeah, I understand.
Now, this ordinance, the ordinance you're doing, is that upper Chice or we pick, is this the one from the county?
County template that we tailored to Upper Chichester Townships currently.
There's no, there's no reason or rhyme for us not to be able to say, hey, because I know there's a couple of commissioners on this board, and I'm one of them. I have no problem with saying it is, I'm not happy with 500 square feet. Why can't we raise ours? And you just stated there's some municipalities that raised the plateau up just a little bit. Not a whole lot, but enough to make it a little easier for the homeowner at the same time, not.
I'd have to check the DEP regulation. I can tell you, the county template and the original template that we got from the first-class townships had 500. So I'm thinking the DEP, that came from DEP, that is mandated by DEP. What I mentioned earlier is I have other municipalities that right now the trigger for stormwater is 1,000 or 2,000. You can certainly try to do that, but we'll end up in the end doing more work with township tax dollars or the MS4.
Which we're already doing now. We're doing more than ever before, put it that way.
Absolutely true. Yes.
So I'm not, I don't want to make it sound like it's, we're not doing, I, my opinion when the board, we're doing above and beyond in this township. I feel that way. I mean, we're not slacking, but we're sure as heck not purposely going behind and adding more to them.
I think for Lisa's comment, if the DEP is requiring it, yes, we may be ahead of the curve in terms of where we were, but eventually, it's going to be more restrictive. The further along we get, it's going to be more restrictive. So in my opinion, it would be best to stay at the 500 square, the 500 feet. Square feet.
So I will check that to make sure, and I'll let everybody know before the next meeting. So we're not going to vote on it this next meeting, but we do need to adopt it by the 30th September. Or adopt and submit.
And I'll pull a list of permits over the past couple of years to see like where a lot of them are falling in from like a size perspective, and I'll try to see if I can pull information to see if anybody scaled back based off of the requirement to see if like there's, you know, so for instance, if DEP is not hard and fast on the 500 and 750, you know, is the gap that would work. So I'll look into that.
I think 750. Yeah. My, yeah.
Your second avenue, you're correct. I'm glad Putt got holding. There seem to be, I don't know, you could do a survey of site because for some reason it would have just laid, and it's been there probably 80 years, but it's not any of our property. Our property is behind it, the open space. This is all the homeowners. So, and it just stops there at Second Avenue. I think we're too high to get something into that. And that's why I would maybe get a site, a vision, or some kind of a survey and say, hey, what is the elevation because? And let them know, they got to help keep it clean for us, too. It's their yard. It's not our yard. There's no storage right there.
From what I understand, there seems to be an accumulation of debris there.
Right. Thank you.
I believe Commissioner Whitaker probably mentioned the grant. Let me just see. The grant went into PennDOT on the 30th. We applied for 184,000. $184,510 for pedestrian improvements, which audible signals, some new crosswalks, the, some pedestrian signage that we didn't have along Chichester Avenue. So I do have that full scope if anyone's interested. We have moved forward. We should hear about that in December. The, I believe that this isn't, this isn't something I helped Brian do, but I just heard from DCNR that they should be providing the list of projects for the C2P2. So hopefully, hopefully you'll be on that as well. And I believe with the.
Thank you. Anything to be brought to the attention, the engineer?
Yes, I have two questions. The easy ones first. Peach and Plum, George, have we sent a letter? It's, you'll see why it relates to, it's the Peach and Plum easements. Have we sent a letter requiring a signature that the people, the Hagens, I believe it is, have received the letter from us about the purported easement that's required?
I did. I sent it to 1821 originally.
Right.
When we found that that, that they weren't living there, I sent it to Bishop.
Right. And have they indicated?
I have heard absolutely nothing from them.
Okay, well, what I'm, what I'm asking is can we send a document that has to be signed for? For.
Returns, certified returns.
Okay. I mean, is.
Yeah, it went regular man.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to just show up at their house asking for a signature. I mean, I will do that if you feel I should, but this is now the one property that's holding up the project. I mean, we may be able to implement parts of it, but it seems to me to be a better idea to do the entire project.
I'm. I'll look to see if I can find a phone number.
Okay.
Usually I can find one in my pages. Doesn't necessarily mean it's the correct one. I may actually call the adjoining property owner who had told me, see if she has a number for them because I believe she's in contact with them.
Was that Donna?
Yes.
She does not.
She does not?
No. Because when I got her to sign, I said, do you have their, I mean, you can, you can check with her, but when I last spoke to her, she's not. Yeah, and if you can find something, I'd be happy to call and speak to them. The other question is a little more involved than it may require input from both Mike and Lisa is the Larkin and Eric property. It is, I have received reports that one of the properties is still cutting trees down back there and adding wood chips to the property. That's, that's the alleged comment. I don't know what the original order from the judge was to say that he was allowed to continue doing that. He's not allowed to continue doing that. And whether we've ever inspected it or just taken his engineer's word that it has been done properly, and it may have been done properly then, but if he's cut more trees down and added more wood chips, he's probably negated what he did.
We had given them the approval based on the proposal from a Combi's firm and that they were to proceed on that. I don't know that we've ever been asked to do any inspections or anything associated with that after they started the project. The other issue is that the other neighbor has not, has not tied into that.
I understand, but I don't know what the, there was, he went to court, correct? They went to court, correct?
They did.
And they were told to follow.
Well, we reached an agreement. We withdrew the citations based on the engineer's proposal as to what needed to be done, and my understanding was that they had done what they needed to do or were in the process. The bigger issue is that the other folks are noncompliant. Probably. I have no idea. I.
I can, I can answer some of that. We did not, we received a report, didn't have any detail other than he was suggesting certain things. I was asked to go out because the code enforcement officer was not able to go out on the site. There is a report, there is concentrated flow that's coming from the upstream property through the Burkle property, which there is no work that's been done at Burkle. I did not see much of anything. Of course, it was pouring rain in his buckets the day I was out there. There, there's photos and a report here in, at the township building. There is definitely work that needs to be completed. There's still water that is coming from the other site concentrating on the upstream site down through the Burkle property and onto the Eric Drive Blue Nards. As far as the trees or whatever, other things that they, depending on, this has been a bone of contention. They had, he has removed quite a bit of, of wooden area from his site. He contends that he did it under the ordinance. I can tell you that I have contended that he has done more and should be doing stormwater management.
But the concern is, what Mr. Neary is saying is, if somebody's telling him that he's taking more trees down, that means there's going to be more water going to the Burkle and to Eric. So can we go to the property and see this? I mean, was he told not to be able to take any more trees? I mean, yeah. Right. Anything else for the engineer? Not, we'll move on to the solicitor's report. Mr. Pierce.
The holdup's on their end, not ours, because I've been getting calls and I, okay, yeah, that's.
Anything to be brought to the attention of the solicitor? Mike, I was looking at the one report that I got for the night's meeting. You're saying that six, tell us, like somewhere between 6:50, we have to act on?
When we get, when we get an extension request, we don't have it yet.
We don't have it.
So I have to find that. I, my understanding is.
Okay, so, so we don't have to act on it. They want the extension. Or the extensions to us next week, though, right? I wanted to make sure.
Well, do you know, he's talking to the pipeline people, but is he still trying to put 12 or 14 houses in?
Okay. I have two things, basically. Well, number five on your report, I'd like to set up a meeting, a virtual meeting. It's about the incentive program.
Yep.
Set up a meeting sometime next week, if possible.
Sure.
So that in August, we could vote on it.
Yep, next week would be good.
Okay, that'd be great. The other thing is, and I know this slipped my mind last month, that the Creekside legal descriptions, because it's my understanding that the open, open space area was never designated as township property. And are you aware of this, Mike?
No, not off the top of my, not as that particular issue, but go ahead.
We were, we were originally going to stake it out so that we would know what property was ours and what property was theirs, and upon doing that, someone, well, Putt called me and indicated that it was not designated to us, not released to us.
It's not dedicated to us.
Thank you.
It's been going around to a bunch of different spots, and there we found a multitude of issues. My understanding was he was going to have to present with Phil, kind of, hey, Mike, here's all the, all the cleanup that we've got to do.
Just for, I mean, for the whole township or Creekside? Is, right. Delay has never been dedicated to us, basically. Jennifer Way's been how long? That's what I say. It's been a while. That would, okay, since they weren't dedicated, because, and I know Joe has some issues in Creekside. There's a, there's a couple of little spots that are like right behind a house or a couple of houses behind Mill Road that go nowhere. Since they haven't been dedicated, can we not accept the whole plan and say, we don't want all that? Or because it's already been on the plan?
I have to take a look. We would, the process would be, it would be offered for dedications. The deed would be given to the township. We'd get the title insurance. We'd get the clearance, and the township would generally accept it because the approval of the entire plan was subject to that dedication of the open space. Now, that's obviously one issue. Now, if it's a condition of the property, which is outside of what we would normally expect it to be presented to us, we could reject that and make them clean it up first. we could reject that and make them clean it up first. I think they could, but I'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah, the, the problem that we have with Creekside is we have already cleaned up several issues.
Figured that that's what.
You know, and I think you've, I think we have a lot of difficulty in saying to them, no, it's yours now, you know?
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, we may have to, we may, we may have to come to some, we may have to come to some type of compromise, but you know, we can take a look at that. But that would be the normal process. Not really, but that's okay.
You're an elf.
Got it.
Got it, right? Anything to be brought to attention in it, solicitor? Not we'll move on to our manager's report.
Thank you, everybody. First item up is we have a couple escrow releases. We have some drafts in there for you. The library had sent a request that we had talked about last month about the township becoming the grantee for their RACP grant. I think it would be in our best interest to ratify that formally as a motion at the meeting. The administrative assistant permit coordinator, Amy, has started. So I'd like to ratify her employment agreement. When I was at the APMM conference, I ran into a vendor Millennium Strategies Grant Writing Services. So over the past couple of months, I've been kind of like putting feelers out to some of the municipalities that I've seen that have been pretty successful with achieving like a substantial amount of grant money in various different fields. And kind of asking them what they're doing, figure out what everybody's been doing different. And what I've found is that a lot of them keep grant writers on retainers. So I kind of, as I interacted with these people, I asked them to kind of go over what their services look like, what the, the structure would be. So I've received a proposal from them, something to look at, ask questions. I think it's a, be something that if the board is interested in, I'd like to like look to this going forward as something towards the end of the year or starting for next year as, you know, getting a grant writer on retainer. You'll have about $30,000 worth of tax collector refunds from Dan submitted. They're being vetted right now by Marco Benelli. Once he makes sure that everything's correct, he's going to turn those over to us. We need to have our July budget meeting. We typically have that budget meeting on like the last Monday of the month. Is that, is that something that works for everybody?
That's the 25th?
Yep.
I'm good. Anybody else?
Maybe do that at 7:00 PM. And then the focus I'd like of that meeting is by then I will have in from all of the department heads, kind of their capital requests for next year. So we can kind of start looking at that as well as I think it'd be a good idea to invite the agencies that we give funds to, to bring, let them know that that's going to be our first meeting and maybe have them kind of, if they've gotten their preliminary numbers together is what they're looking for from us to come in and present to us as well.
If I come to you and say, hey, my committees are this, this and this, and I just get those line items in my budget before this meeting, so I could see where I stand.
Oh, yeah.
Say, hey, can you get that, I mean, without being too difficult for all the commissioners?
We can break it out really easy.
And then they could say, hey, what do we really need? Or they could talk to the, to their people to say, hey, and I know what you're getting. You're getting the cap, the wish lists is basically what you're getting from each.
Yeah, but it lines up good because into July is when we were starting to work on, we've already basically broken up the budget. So we have everybody giving us their forecast for the end of the year. So it's, we're already breaking apart the budget like that now, so we can give you that.
Of course, mine. That's a lot, but. Sorry, I take a deep. Thank you.
And then the last item is I was contacted by Lower Chi to see where we were at with that Lawhead Avenue project. They had engaged us a while back, interested in doing a streetscape along Lawhead Avenue on Lower Chi Chester and Upper Chi Chester. And they are interested to see if we would go in on a multi-ministerial, multimodal grant application for this with them. So if the board is interested in proceeding forward with that, I can get a, I'll have a resolution at the meeting.
Why not?
Yeah, we had a rough cost estimate put together for the project previously. So I'll pull all that together and, and we have a, a rendering of kind of like what, what the streetscape would look like.
We have that for our side of the street.
It was done in conjunction, it was done for the whole project.
The whole, both sides?
A little different part of the, the, it's part of the complaints on Lawhead. We're obviously speeding the narrowness in some sections of the, of the roadway.
The whole road. Section.
Yeah, the difference in the, in the, the parking Chi side to the, the, or Chi side. Driveways on one side, there's street parking on the other side. So the idea was to kind of do some corrections on the intersection of Chi Avenue to, to make it safer, make it easier for pedestrians. We get a lot of complaints about how long that crosswalk is and how difficult it is to get through there. So I'll send it out, but, but basically, yes, in a nutshell, some of the design standards continue. It's more designed for, it's like a residential road.
So is there a design match hours or do they have anything?
The rendering for this, this was done, I, I thought I said this out a while back, but I'll send it back. We did this like, maybe a year ago, we got the rendering done with Brian Sedell. So I'll send it back out there, buddy. And I believe that's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention of the manager? Now we'll move on to the commissioners. Madam Vice President, Nicole.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. A little under the weather, so excuse my congestion. The library is continuing to work on the grants for the, the RACP grant. And recreation, summer camp is underway. And Heart and Soul, that contract agreement has been extended through August 31st. And George already mentioned the, the multimodal grant. I think that would be a great partnership to get, to make improvements on Lawhead Avenue. So hopefully we can, George, if you send that out, you get some, send your responses to George so that he can get the resolution ready for next week, if you're in favor of that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anything to be brought to the attention, Commissioner? Now we're moving along to Commissioner Neary.
Thank you, sir. The financial reports and the police report will be available next week. The tax, I see the tax collectors' report is already there and we'll get the detail on the refunds. Okay. It looks like some of the detail is here, but, you know. Once again, I'll just mention, George, you've been in touch with the redistricting people in terms of what they could provide. I just want to say that it's, it's a more full service option. They will incorporate what we've done in the past, but it will also, they'll also do advertising for meetings and try to get it out to the public so that they'll be aware of what's going on. That's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention, Commissioner Neary? I just make one, I just want to make a comment about the redistricting. I think we're at the point now, it's, it needs to be done. I mean, we're at the 159, there's no split on 16 and 159. We were so close last time that I think there's, we should be able to get something out of this sooner than later. Just think it's time we do something and I think we only had like two streets that we were trying to figure out. I think if we can move something around and still be 20%, we're going to be pretty darned close somewhere. Not go five, if not go seven. We'll see what happens, but I think we, that's something this board's been working on for how many years? Too many recently? I think we, we need to at least get this done. Well, not, not 30 that I've been sitting up here, but. Absolutely. I agree. Right. Commissioner Guardiasso is not here tonight. His report or most of his reports already in the minutes here for the meeting with all the applications. Mr. Pierce touched on a couple of them. For Mike, well, if anybody has any questions, I think I had the one question for the one plan, and that was answered with the extension. If it's a request, it's. Anybody else has anything? Maybe George has an answer on Mike's report with all these applications that went through or going through now. Did Mike have any comments for you for tonight or basically?
Uh, no, I mean, I can run through the applications if you want real quick.
Yeah, that's fine.
659 Conchester Highway, that's the McDonald's relocation project, relocating the McDonald's across Conchester Highway into the Larkins Corner Shopping Center. That plan, the application is under review. It is expected to, we don't have an expected date for land develop, sorry, to go in front of the planning commission. They did a preliminary presentation on 6/23/2022. It is my understanding that that plan, as they stated that night, will require some zoning relief, so they will be on hold as they go through zoning once they submit that application to them. 900 Township Line Road, this has been a plan that's been in for a while that we've been going back and forth quite some time with them to get everything in. The other day I received the updated traffic study, which I believe was the last requirement for them to submit, not for review. So there's still a lot of review that needs to happen, but they were, they had not submitted that yet. So that's being reviewed by the engineer. We do anticipate that they'll either be at the 7/28 Planning Commission meeting, or if not, we will be getting an extension and they'll be coming in August. 4800 Chi Chester Avenue has resubmitted all the updated plans. They anticipate that they'll be at the Planning Commission on 7/28 and you have a extension in front of you until August 31st. 3033 Market Street, that project was granted a variance by the zoning hearing board back in June. The applicant plans to attend the July 28th Planning Commission meeting as well as you have a extension for that plan until August 31st. 801 Bethel Road Land Development, they came to the Planning Commission on 5/26/2022. We have anticipated 7/28/2022 as for Planning Commission. However, at this point, we have not received updated plans on that one, so the most likely that's going to be pushed. And then you have 650 Cherry Tree Road, which was commented on earlier. If we do not receive an extension within the next couple of days, I would suggest that we declare a resolution just to be safe. And that's all for planning zoning. 832 Bethel Road, which was the school district, was granted. There are variance from section 600-222C with the expansion, nonconforming use of the property by more than 25%. The applicant will be, is proposing to construct a 3,200 square foot garage to store maintenance vehicles. Very, the new garage represents an increase of the nonconforming use of the property by 59.3%.
All right, so the 650, you just mentioned about the resolution. Just in case we don't get the extension, we will act on their review from the planning. If not. Right, which was their original one with all the houses and all that. Okay. We'll leave it at that. I just want to make a comment about the, I'm, I'm just a comment. We're not voting on anything, but the, we were just talking about it now, which is 750 square feet with the stormwater management. And the zoning board approved this building and it's now 59.3% of the, of all structures on the property. So there's stormwater management there. I mean, that one outside the envelope, but yet it was passed through the zoning to be able to put something on that property bigger. So it's just a consideration that we think we should up it to, I mean, just to see it to 750 at least is okay for some of the residents around it. We're pushing stormwater, but we're, we're giving zoning grants on building, buildings bigger than what's on the property, so. Anything, any other comments for?
George, when I submit the plans back, are those comments related to the appropriate parts?
We'll continue with Commissioner Joe Viocco.
Thank you. The Teamsters contract negotiations, we're kind of waiting to start them until we finish the trash route study. I met with Putt, Jim Marie last week and George met with him this week to try to hash everything out. Usually I'll be getting an email to show you what, what we want to come up with because probably going to be a few more hires involved and stuff like that. And I want everybody to get a good look at it before we have to vote on it. Like I said, some of that'll have some contract effects. If it goes through, we'll have to make changes to the contract. So that's where we're at on them two things. And the only, I have a couple of requests. The Putt wants to sell a 2008 X mark lawnmower. It's got a bad hydraulic pump. It ain't worth fixing. So he'll put it out for a bid just to get something out of it. The okay to line two pipes, one on Dresner Circle, the other one on Malatesta Avenue. The quote is roughly a little under 25,000 to do both. I mean, we're lining as opposed to tearing out and replacing. Yeah, it's got to go out for a bid, but that's what he's requesting. But I mean, do you agree with linings? Okay. And they, we're ordering, we want to get a new roller for next year. But things are so far out, we would have to order it this year for next year, and he just wants to put the order in. It's roughly $50,000, it will be in next year's budget and all, but we'll never get it next year if we don't order it this year.
Yeah, so, so basically two things are happening that we're seeing. We're seeing the prices of some of the stuff that we would typically do annually as just part of the regular business skyrocket. So again, part of the question was how to handle this going forward throughout the year. So, you know, some of these, these, some of the things that have been coming up, the prices, the quotes that we've been getting for them are substantially higher than what we would have gotten a year ago or two years ago. So a year ago or two years ago, in our general fund budget, we would have just went ahead, signed off on it and got it done and kept moving along, right? So we're seeing that some of the prices are ticking up to levels that, you know, typically we, we would bring that as like, hey, board, this is a, you know, project at this level, but really these are everyday expenses. They're just higher. So, you know, I guess it's figuring out how, what's the best way to communicate this stuff to the board? Do you want me to hold these, wait some of these are situations where, you know, potentially we need to get the job done quicker? Should I be holding these till the board meeting, bringing all these to you? Should I send an email out of kind of like, hey, here's a list of some of these expenses that you're going to see in the checks that are a lot higher than you've normally been saying, but they're normal expenses. And then the other thing is we're having, still having issues with getting some supplies in where things like a roller, which is going to be on the capital budget for next year, they're telling us if you don't get something in now, you're not getting it in 2023.
Have a similar problem with the police department, that those vehicles will not be even, they're not even going to put notice out, they're putting them online until July or August. Was it that they, they said they would wait? The police, the police cars, how far, it was August before he would tell you we could order again? Yeah, so.
You know what? I would think it's just here, it's everywhere. It's just everything, everybody gets. But I mean, if it's not a wish, a wish list dream project, it's something that, it pretty makes sense because if we wait till next year and I go into it until 24, then it's going to be another 10,000 dollars. I mean, you could just send us an email, George, and say, hey, this is what's going on. They need to replace it. We got to order it. I think most of the staff at this stuff, they're deals with it where he works. I don't have too much of a favor, other people, supplies before where she's at. Quick score, so anything big, it's not coming tomorrow. Now, are they, are they going to need to deposit down?
No.
Just get the order in?
Yeah.
That's all right with everybody else. Some of this.
And one more thing I just want to mention. The August Sewer Authority meeting, Mike DeSantis will be there from Delcora to explain this. Mike DeSantis will be there, uh, from Delcora to explain this tunnel, this big tunnel job that's going in. It's Delkor's, you know, it's like a. Millions and millions of dollars, but it's state of the art. And that's how they're getting away from sending any flows to Philly. It's, this tunnel's a, it's a hundred foot deep. And it's all underground and it's going to save the Delcor customers a ton of money in the future. But he's going to explain how all this is being done and, and the process and all, if anybody's interested. It's, you know, it's, it's interesting. It's state of the arts. It's the first one ever to go in in this area.
Were they having that at an open meeting for the public and all that?
Well, he, he's coming to explain it to them, like if any of us want to come, but it's a public meeting, so anybody, yeah, could come. But I didn't know if any of you guys were interested. Tuesdays, yeah, they're Tuesdays. I, I'll give you a reminder. But it, it's interesting. He'll have, yeah. And that's all I have.
Anything to the, brought to the attention of Mr. Viatto? Now we're moved to my report, uh, short suite. I got one report in tonight, emergency management. Other than that, we're moving along and. Hopefully you don't have the report. Um, this, George, I was going to comment tonight on number five with Mr. Pierce's. I want to, you're, you're correct. I want to make a comment about that and to get this money to these guys because I wasn't, I was talking to somebody outside of here in another municipality and not even thinking about it. Excuse me, Mike made the comment about it, about us paying for the fuel for the fire department. But how about the fuel for the guys? They get up two, three times in the morning, they go and they're running from their house. It's four or five bucks an hour. So I, I think it's. We need to try to get this money to the volunteers because they're using their cars. Yesterday alone, they had six calls. So that's six times they start that car up and go off and then they come back home. So we're not thinking about it. We're thinking about going back and forth to work at four fifty a gallon. They're going to work and responding to our calls. So every little bit helps. I hope we could get this ironed out sooner than later. I got the article here I read with Radner. They went back and gave their E M T's money, that volunteer, and it seems to be working very well out there. And I just know we need to get ours out, like George said, no later in August to these, the men and women. That use their own personal vehicle every day. So anybody have anything for me? If not, we'll need a mission to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Who's? Good night.